July 28th, 2025, School Board Meeting, we'll begin with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good welcome, everybody here this evening. Just a couple of housekeeping items. We do have registration to address the board on any of the actionable items on our agenda this evening. There are forms up here near Attorney Elwood. Just fill out a form, return it to the board table, and we will bring you up at that appropriate time. We also will have public comment at the end of our meeting for any subject that you'd like to address with the board. With that same process, just come up and grab a form, fill it out, and return it to the board table. All board members were provided background information in preparation for tonight's meeting, and our meeting is being livestreamed, and we welcome those who are watching us remotely. So we'll begin the meeting with our Portage Township Schools Communication Department and our student staff presentations. Melissa?
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Melissa Tevers. I'm the Director of Communications and Community Engagement, and I am joined by Emily Cosina. I'm our Digital Media Specialist for our Communications Department. The National School Public Relations Association supports school communicators in their efforts to not only inform their school communities, but connect and engage with them as well. Each year, INSRA hosts the Publications in Digital Media Awards as a method of recognizing exceptional tactical work in school public relations. Winning submissions earn a distinction of excellence, merit, or honorable mention, and come with a digital badge and certificate. This year, we are proud to announce that Portage Township Schools, for the first time ever, has earned a total of five Publications in Digital Media Awards: two awards of excellence, two awards of merit, and one honorable mention. I would like to take some time to explain each and celebrate the people behind the entries and what makes each one special. So our first that we received this year was an honorable mention in photography. So this was, the title of the entry was "Step Up to the Homecoming Pep Rally." This was a picture that we caught during our pep rally this year of our step team. One student in particular who, every single time, she's just so focused when she performs, and as the crowd kept getting more and more excited during the event, she just got this big smile across her face. So it's kind of that moment of transitioning from nerves to being proud of yourself and realizing you accomplished something. So it was just a really cool moment to capture. Our next award is an award of merit. This is in the category of newsletter. This is for our Portage Township Schools Fast Five Newsletter. So this is something that comes out about every two weeks or so during the school year. Emily is primarily responsible for this. We've had to work out what kind of content that we want to put in each and send it out to our families. We had noticed a few years ago that as we were doing newsletters for the school community, that our open rate was low. We just weren't getting the readers that we were getting previously. So we kind of did a hard look at kind of what our families were looking for, and what we determined was that was just too long. So once we shortened it up and put five fast things that parents can read about in five minutes or less, our open rate just exploded. And we usually get about 10,000 views or so on the newsletter each time it goes out. So that was a really special one to kind of know that we're in the right direction on that. Our next award was an award of merit. This was in the category of marketing material, and this is for our annual Portage Proud Community Newsletter. This was something that we decided to start up a couple of years ago as a way to reach all of our residents, including those who may not have students who are enrolled in the district. So this is a way to get that really good news out to the public. It's, again, it's short, it's an easy read, but it's something that really packs a punch. Our next award was the highest award possible, and this was an award of excellence in writing. So this was for a press release that we did earlier this school year on Portage High School being named a Project Adam Heart Safe School. And I really want to shout out to Megan Clay on this, and really on all of these. There's so much that goes into what we do with each of these entries, from, you know, being able to have a step team and, you know, everybody that we feature in the newsletter each week. We have so much good stuff going on. So I want to shout out to her on this one for bringing this to our school district and allowing us the opportunity to write that up. And then our final award is also highest category, award of excellence. This was for branding image materials for the Portage Township Schools Branding Guide. For Emily, this was probably the first thing that I put on her plate when she walked in the door a year ago, and I said, "We have a branding guide. It's just not very robust. We really need something that outlines what you do and when, and how you use the different colors, and what does it mean to be Portage Proud? We have nothing that outlines that." So she really created a great branding guide that encompassed all of those things and then some. So now anytime somebody comes to us and says, "Hey, I'm creating something," I can say, "Here. This is how you do it. This is the colors that you want to use. This is the font that you want to use," different things like that. So that has been a really nice addition as well. So those are what we received. Super proud. Again, these are tactical things. They're all part of kind of a bigger plan that I know we've talked about in the past. So it's great to know that the things that we're doing are headed in the right direction. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Melissa, I know we've came a long way from a few years ago, and we had a lot of conversations about what we can do better, and obviously, that recognition is just pales in comparison on how appreciative we are of the work that you guys do in communicating with our families and our community, and just everything looks so good, and it's timely, and so thank you for everything that you do. Anybody else have any comments?
I'd like to just make one point about communication. When it's clear, when communication is clear, students and staff are more engaged, families are more informed, and the community is more supportive. And that's what's happening right now. So thank you for all your efforts and hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on. Are there any adjustments to the agenda from the board this evening? If not, okay. I don't believe I saw any public comments come up, so we'll move on to our superintendent's consent agenda, which has our personnel report for July the 28th, the donations and claims report, as well as facility use request report. Do we have a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the superintendent's consent agenda.
Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions? Hear none. Call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Next up, we have our board's consent agenda, which has the minutes from our July, I'm sorry, June 23rd regular discussion meeting. Do we have a motion to approve the board's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any old business. Oh, I'm sorry, board development. Do we have any board reports?
I do. On June the 26th, the RDC unanimously approved a $250,000 education grant for our school district. This funding would help with the purchase of laptop devices for our second and eighth grade students, and these devices will be used daily to access curricular content, complete personalized learning, and for assessments. I know that the goal is that these devices will be ready for the first day of school, and I really appreciate the commission of the redevelopment, and I know that we as a board appreciate that grant and that amount. Also like to announce that this Thursday, the 31st, the redevelopment commission will be meeting at 4:30 at City Hall, and the public is welcome to attend.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Any other board reports? No? Okay. No old business. We'll move on to new business. Some exciting stuff here. We've got our recommendation and approval to name the Portage High School Baseball Complex. Dr. Alanis?
So we would like to name, the recommendation is to name the complex after Mr. Larry Caspin. He was a Portage High School teacher and coach, quickly earning the respect of students, staff, and the greater Portage community for his dedication and integrity. In 1976, he was named Athletic Director, a position he held with distinction for 20 years. During his tenure, Mr. Caspin led with vision, fairness, and a deep commitment to student-athlete development. Following his time in administration, he returned to the classroom, continuing to invest in the lives of students until retirement. Mr. Caspin's influence on Portage Athletics, particularly baseball, is profound and enduring. Naming the Portage High School Baseball Complex in his honor is a fitting tribute to his legacy and a lasting symbol of our appreciation for his decades of service to our school community.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve naming the baseball complex after Larry Caspin?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion? I'd just say, this is exciting. You know, these, for years, we look at a lot of our school buildings, and they've got names of Myers and Jones and Alesworth, and it's been a long time since we started looking at the legacies of others, you know? And in the most recent years, the dusty roads, the pool, the facility after him, and the Lavenda Learning Center, and now taking it into the other part of athletics here, and anyone who came in contact with Mr. Caspin, some of us as a teacher way back in the days, and those who in athletics, as an athletic director, what a great person he was, great human being, and his dedication to Portage. So it's really an honor to be part of this board that does that naming. So thank you for bringing that to the board, and I think that's, it's very appropriate, for sure. Any other comments? Hear none? Call roll, please.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Okay. Next up, we've got the recommendation and for approval to name the Portage High School Football Complex. Dr. Alanis?
So we are fortunate to have this living legacy in the room with us. Mr. Les Klein attended high school in Morocco, Indiana in 1956 as a three-year football letterman, all-conference running back, 1954 to 1955, football team MVP, and 1955 captain football, basketball, and track teams. Les attended St. Joe College in 1960 and was the leading rusher in Indiana collegiate conference as a senior, selected as team's MVP, won little All-American honors, all-Catholic, All-American, and a charter member of the St. Joe's College Football Hall of Fame. Coach Klein also coached in North Johnson for four years, four years at Lowell, and 19 years at Portage, with a total head coaching record of 156, 110, and 3. In 1977, the PHS team, under his leadership, won the Class III A state championship, three conference championships, four sectionals, and one regional championship. The staff coached for the North-South All-Star Game in 1975 and 1981. The team also holds among the top 20 all-time career coaching victories in Indiana. Coach Klein was inducted into the Indiana Hall of Fame in June of 1990, and we could not think of a better individual to name our stadium after than Coach Klein. Would you like to come forward?
Coach, would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Do I have to use a mic?
You don't have to. I think you're used to talking loud, right?
Yes, I am. You know, I am so happy that you took care of Mr. Caspin. I assisted him for 20 years, and I have never met a finer man in this business, in that genre. He was my shining light. He was my shining light for 20 years, and was so supportive. But I'm not going to sit up there and start naming names because this room is not big enough. I hope the stadium is big enough to handle all the people who made my career what it was. I'm not going to say it's success, but I do believe that there was a degree of success that came in there. But I also know that my daddy once told me, he said, "Us, the path of least resistance to success is to surround yourself with successful people." And I was extremely fortunate to do that at all levels, at all levels. And the timing of my coming to Portage was at the boom town. I mean, that was 1970, and the steel mills had come to big, and we had people moving in here. It was just, you know, the farmland couldn't grow houses fast enough, and it just, it exploded, and it worked so well for our program, I thought. You know, with Jeff and Ken sitting there, I can't, I can't tell any lies. So I will say that I will have an opportunity to mention these people, my assistant coaches, all the Hall of Fame people that I've dealt with down through the years, who on their own right, and with the help that they gave me here at Portage High School, to be in the Indiana Football Hall of Fame. You know, I just hope it all works out. But anyway, I want to congratulate the board on your wise choice with Larry Caspin. And, you know, he's been my leader, and I'm glad you've read him first, because I'm following him still. That's good. That's a good place to be. Because the idea is, okay.
I have a request. Can you introduce your lovely wife, please?
I don't hear.
Introduce me.
Come back.
My wife, Trudy, was my greatest supporter. She would stand up, but she's, she needs a little help with that. Needless to say, it's just obvious, as I was a teenager, I was an extremely fortunate man 16 years ago.
Our athletic department and our football team have this for you, as well as another little token. For everyone, we will be sending out an invite as well. October 10th, I believe, is the date of the formal dedication ceremony. But of course, we wanted to go through the approval with the board, and I know that Trudy's going to make sure we get that invite list, so we can also get their friends and family here. And what a great honor for the community, and thank you. I look forward to October 10th when we can make it all official.
Well, this is the greatest honor and the greatest humbling experience I have ever had.
I don't know if there are others here who'd like to say something, but let's first, let's make this official. Do we have a motion to approve the naming of the Portage High School Football Complex after Coach Les Klein?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second.
Everybody wants a second.
Call roll, please.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Would anybody else, any other comments or anything for Coach? Go ahead.
I'd like to say, I've never had the pleasure, the honor, to know you, meet you, but just in the few comments that you made, I know that you're a man of wisdom, integrity, you're humble, and you've impacted hundreds, hundreds of children. So thank you for that. Appreciate you. Thank you.
I can speak to, for Mr. Caspin and Coach Klein, I was fortunate enough to play for Coach Klein for four years back in the late 80s, and it was, Mr. Caspin was the AD, Coach Klein was the assistant, and, you know, and all those assistant coaches that he referenced, they were like, you know, they coached multiple sports, and, you know, they were dads to all the kids in this community, and we couldn't wait to get the high school to play for that group under Coach's leadership. And then me personally leaving and coming back and teaching and coaching in Portage and becoming the athletic director and having those guys as consultants and all the things that go good and bad, you know? And now to be able to call my friend, so.
I did just want to share, Melissa has created these, and you guys can come up and see them, but they are both honoring boards for Coach Klein and Caspin, and we're going to look to have, again, some sort of a feature at each of our locations that also gives some of that history, provides the pictures as we try to capture this, you know, in these opportunities to name things and make sure that that legacy continues to live on long after the naming, and all of us are, you know, in different places, and that legacy is still highlighted.
Any other comments? Well, Coach, congratulations. It's been, it's an honor, again, for us to be serving here on this board at this time to name that field after you. There is no one more deserving than you are for the time that you put in at Portage High School and within the Portage Township Schools and your contributions to our athletics and to our community. So congratulations. Now, as we move on to the rest of our agenda, I, it won't hurt our feelings if you don't want to stay for the rest of our meeting. You're welcome to, but you don't have to. We'll allow that time for you, for you to leave, and if that's what you need to do, so. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, Mr. Hofer, thank you for, you came to our last meeting or a couple of meetings ago and spoke about this, and so thank you for that.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 10th of October.
So we'll be contacting former players and...
Because he was the starter.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. He obviously was. Okay, we'll move on, get through the rest of our agenda. We have our retroactive approval of the overnight field trip on July 18th through 20th to Lafayette, Indiana for the girls volleyball camp. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Call roll, please.
Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes.
Next, we have the approval to apply for the Ed Flex waivers. Dr. Alanis, can you explain?
Yes. So we're seeking approval to apply for the Indiana Department of Education's renewal of the two Ed Flex waivers. Waiver two and waiver four are the two waivers we'd like to apply for. Waiver two is increased flexibility in paraprofessional requirements. Since no child left behind, all instructional paraprofessionals working in title schoolwide services must meet the highly qualified status demonstrated by completing two years of college or passing a para-pro assessment. Through the Ed Flex waiver, we utilize an additional pathway for meeting requirement, meeting this requirement. They can complete 10 courses in an online training platform for paraeducators within two months of their employment. The second waiver, which is actually waiver four, is the increased flexibility in Title IV spending requirements that receive over $30,000. So if a district's total allocation is $30,000 or more, a minimum of 20% must be allocated to a focus area A. Well-rounded education, a minimum of 20% must be also allocated to focus area B, which would be some goal under safe and healthy schools. Some must be allocated to focus area C for technology. This waiver, however, provides increased flexibility for us as a district to use the original grant as written, as well as amend in order to better meet our curriculum needs. We need to solicit public comment as required. There's a public notice that was posted on our website, and no comments were received during that time.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve to apply for the Ed Flex waiver?
I make a motion to apply for the Ed Flex waiver.
Do we have a second?
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions?
So the online training that the parapoles would be receiving, is there a fee for that, or is that part of the...
They are not required to pay a fee. We have a subscription to Elevations, and Elevations is a platform that I am actually learning, I learned last week from Linda, that our student data kind of helps inform how that PD goes for, like, once a teacher gets into the platform. But for this, we have the 10 courses that they have to take within those two months specifically for this waiver. Oh, it's a completely different system. Okay. Master teacher. But yes.
So I think that this would... I think this would positively impact individuals who are trying to, you know, get a job or position as a para-pro with having like two years of college, you know?
Right.
Credit. That's sometimes a little difficult, but having them have the online training fee, training, and then being able to be successful there, I think that would increase our numbers.
Yes, and this is, while this waiver is already in place, and we are utilizing it currently, but we need to, we need to seek the permission to continue each year with the Department of Education. Otherwise, there's only the two pathways with the paraprofessional assessment for the two years of college. So this gives us that additional pathway that Linda has had in place with them. It's just a matter of, we have to get your approval yearly to continue it while it's available.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hear none. Call roll, please.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Next, we have our approval of the license agreement and associated fees with Niola.
So with Niola, we would like to continue this. As you know, it is a great platform for us to be able to work closely with policies that is coming out as legislative sessions conclude, and we have the revised policies that update based on that legislation, and it's a great checks and balance for some internal controls on our part, as well as the committee. As you know, we do a lot of work with our policy committee in the district with trustee, excuse me, Vasquez and trustee Wilkie. So this is just simply seeking the approval to continue that license agreement with Niola and the fees associated. And the fees, let me go get to that for you. $2,750 in an annual update service increase of 3%.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the license agreement and associated fees with Niola?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions? Call roll, please.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Next, we have the approval of the Circle R Mechanical Plumbing Service Agreement.
So this was something that was brought to myself and Nick Gronn by Mila Mavrovich, our Buildings and Grounds Director, and we are seeking to renew this agreement. We've worked with Circle R. This has been a year now, Mila, in this capacity, and they really are extremely responsive and really good at what they do, being able to help us solve various plumbing issues as they arise. So I'm seeking your approval to continue this service agreement.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve Circle R Mechanical Plumbing Service Agreement?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion? It's also a great portage company, too, so it's, it's great to have. Call roll, please.
Trustee Malata?
Yes.
Trustee Wilkie, yes. Trustee Rangan?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Next, we have our recommendation for the approval of branching mines contract for 2025, 2026, or through 2028.
Yes. So this is a three-year contract I'm bringing you, which of course, you know, I try my best to stay within one-year agreements. However, when we're looking at a system that allows data integration within Power School and our student learning platforms for the curriculum, as well as any other assessment that we provide our students or are required to take, such as the iLearn Assessment, iRead Assessment, that data will... That data will seamlessly integrate on the backend for us, and this is going to allow us to better monitor our interventions, to better progress monitor. There's an AI component that then looks at the student's present levels and helps us to analyze that in the click vote button while still being confidential to the student's individual assessment data, so this is within a platform, not just an open AI situation. Also, this is real-time student performance, so it also is bringing in anything behaviorally, anything attendance-wise, so we're able to look at those three categories of academics as well as behavior and attendance and really keep an eye on things, help set goals, monitor those goals through our interventions and remediation as well as meet some of our other research-based needs where they will start to recommend within that platform various strategies that we can monitor that are developmentally and age-appropriate. So, it's a great thing to have coming our way. I did have a meeting over the summer, just a couple of weeks ago, with the teacher forum group, and this group had the demonstration, and they are very excited to get moving with this. Having data at our fingertips is always something we've had. The problem is, how do we find it in one location so that it can be quickly analyzed and we can take appropriate action? And currently, we've just got a lot of data everywhere, and Linda does a great job of trying to put it all in one spot for us to look at. The pieces that we're kind of falling short on is academic, is all together, but it's separate from that behavior and attendance data, where that won't be anymore. We can really look at the full profile.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the Branching Mines contract in the amount of year one, $46,450; year two, $46,350; and year three, $46,350.
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any questions?
Couple. One is a, is a comment, and since the time of beginning MTS, as I know, this, this, you've come a long, long way.
Yes.
I remember just sitting with a group of, like, a teacher and a literacy coach and, and other individuals, administrators, and we had to look for all that data and put it all together, and that was very time-consuming. It sounds like it's, it's gonna be very unreliable. And then, the professional development that I noticed that was part of it, is that an onsite or is that kind of coaching as you go along? Do you know?
So, we are, it's going to be a mix of the two. We're adding another feature in there, too. So, we have our district, district-level MTSS team, and each building has a team. In addition, we're adding another component, which is going to be a behavior development team that has representation from each of the buildings, and Kevin Dill is our contracted individual with the grant Stephanie was awarded from the state for professional development on behavior. So, this is gonna be external training, both onsite and pre-recorded, but then also there's gonna be in-depth training of the behavior team at the district level, at the building level with our MTSS teams, and be able to really get that out into not only the teaching staff, but the instructional support staff. So, it's gonna be tiered in a lot of different ways, a lot of different venues of how they're gonna be receiving that training and then being able to archive it and go back.
I see this, this is gonna be of great benefit to our...
Absolutely.
Not only teachers, of course, ultimately for our students.
Yep. And then, when you're talking about a high school student, that you may teach the same individual, but you're at the farthest east end of the building and I'm at the farthest west, I can see that that student's also struggling in your classroom because all those things are coming through. I might be the person who has a really good connection, maybe there's no issues in my classroom, but I can see that he's struggling and not turning in work and that, and make that connection as well. So, it will be great.
So, it's kind of a template as well where they can add information as they go along, different teachers and different individuals?
And it's not another thing on teachers' or administrators' plates because if there's something going into Power School about attendance or about discipline or missing assignments, it all is coming here. It's not like they have to then document it in another place. It's all feeding in.
We're still working on the tier one, two, and three, right?
Yep.
Okay, hasn't changed.
Not adding that, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Call, roll, please.
Trusty Wilkie?
Yes.
Trusty Rayan?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Vazquez?
Yes.
Trusty Malata?
Yes. Next, we have a recommendation to approve the non-union support staff salary adjustment and employee bonuses.
So, before you, what I have is a recommendation for a 2% salary increase for all of our non-union support staff employees who have not yet received any type of salary adjustment in the 2025 calendar year or have not been hired as of March 1st and to this point. The increase will be retroactive to July 1, and this adjustment ensures equity and recognition for their continued efforts in the district that are not covered by a collective bargaining agreement.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the non-union support staff salary adjustment and bonus?
Make motion to approve the non-union support staff salary adjustment and employee bonus.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions? Here, done. Call, roll, please.
Trusty Rayan?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Vazquez?
Yes.
Trusty Malata?
Yes.
Trusty Wilkie?
Yes. Next, we have our approval of contracts and service agreements. We've got for the Communications Department, EDO, a website content management software system. It's a one-year agreement for a period of 9/15/2025 through 9/14/2026, an amount of $12,000 to be paid from the operations fund. For the ID, IT Department, Adtech, an E-rate constellation service agreement. This is for the funding year of 2026 at a cost of $11,000 to be paid from the operations fund. And for the Transportation Department, For Inc. Webz, a student conduct reporting software system, it's a one-year agreement from July 2025 to June 2026 at a cost of $1,592. Do you have a motion to approve the contract service agreements as read?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion or questions? Here, done. Call, roll, please.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Vazquez?
Yes.
Trusty Malata?
Yes.
Trusty Wilkie?
Yes.
Trusty Rayan?
Yes.
Next, we have the recommendation to approve the JWF contract.
So, I'm really excited to bring this to you. We have been using JWF, our workers' compensation administrative services. This was entered in 2011. They, the board re-approved the contract in 2017 and again in 2022. This is a three-year renewal with an annual fee, flat fee of $20,500. There are miscellaneous fees and services that come. I want to share with you something that we are going to be offering. We have not, of course, shared this as of yet because your approval is necessary, but I'm really excited about something that we're called 24/7 Triage. This is a new service provided by a registered nurse via phone, which assists employees with immediate assessment and prioritization of potential medical needs, so they can call this phone number and, you know, if there's an injury that has just occurred, they can get, okay, let's get ice on that, let's do this. Then that individual contacts our office in Human Resources with, and shares the medical advice that is appropriate to share as far as the injury has occurred and next steps. But our hope is that our employees feel confident in being able to trust a medical professional and who's on the other end to advise them swiftly, because sometimes they are reluctant to, you know, go to work, working well or something, but they do need to, you know, at least adj, adj, excuse me, address that they have just bent their finger backwards or whatever. So, it's just another opportunity for us to further our partnership and build that trust and sense of care and empathy with our employees that they can call a registered nurse, and it is 24/7 in the event that they need to be able to talk through something.
Great, thank you. Do you have the motion to approve the JWF contract?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion? I do see it's noted that Attorney Elwood did review this contract?
Yes.
Thank you. Call, roll, please.
Trusty Vazquez?
Yes.
Trusty Malata?
Yes.
Trusty Wilkie?
Yes.
Trusty Rayan?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Next up, we've got the approval to advertise device buyback public sale.
So, the memo is the proposal for secure tech solutions, the device buyback sale that we have been utilizing. We used the same process in July of '23, December of '23, and October of 2024. Through these three sales, we've received a total of $303,677.50, and that was the sale of 392 MacBooks and 599 iPads that went back into the community. For your reference, you can see that the eighth-grade gen, I'm sorry, the eighth-gen iPads, the 2020 model, are what we will be selling at the amount of $110 per unit. I just also want to mention that when we do this, they check those devices and they are then therefore, you know, assisting any troubleshooting with whomever buys them after the fact, but if it's a device that really is on its last leg and gonna be garbage, they do not sell it.
Very good, thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the advertising device buyback to a public sale?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
The motion is second. Any discussion?
Just like to say that last year I purchased several for my family members and friends, and they were very pleased. The price was good, and this is one of them that is still working, so.
Good, yeah.
Very pleased with it.
Great. Call, roll, please.
Trusty Malata?
Yes.
Trusty Wilkie?
Yes.
Trusty Rayan?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Vazquez?
Yes.
Next up, we've got the approval of the USW contract for the Transportation Department.
So, attached is the transportation contract that was ratified by USW Transportation, their unit ratified last week. We're seeking board approval of the new contract. There's one difference to the summary compared to the original email back in June when we reached a TA, the midday observation section has been unstruck. So, now, the highlights are that this contract is July 1, 2025, through June 30, 2026. New extra work assignment language regarding seniority in overtime, new field trip language, new cancellation language, increase in bus washing stipend from $95 to $125. A one-hour stipend pay if a two-hour delay is called within 25 minutes of the time you're supposed to show up, and summer school route minimum schedule is three hours for their actual time, so it's a minimum pay of three hours. Of course, without Attorney Elwood's help, this would not be possible, I'll tell you as well. Nick Gronn, our CFO, is very instrumental in all of our USW negotiations as well as their directors, their respective directors in each department, but I also want to capitalize on the relationship that we have with the unit. They are wanting to solve problems, they are wanting to come up with solutions, and this is just an example where there was a little bit more need to go back to the table, and then here we are with that last unit that has settled.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve the USW contract for transportation?
Make a motion to approve the USW contract for transportation.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Just like to, you know, thank everyone that was part of the negotiations and know that the drivers are, have a great responsibility of making sure that our students are transported to and from school safely. They're also responsible for having the students follow the rules, to treat others with respect, and I know that their hours are sometimes kind of challenging. I know that they probably start, I don't even know, 6:30, 6 o'clock, they're...
They're, some of them have to be here as early as 5:15, 5:30.
Okay, and so I thank them for all their efforts and hard work. It's not easy. I know that I would never want to drive a school bus, but it is, you know, the relationships that they build with the students, they are the first individuals that greet the children, and they are probably the last individuals in terms of school officials that, you know, send them home and wish them well, and that those relationships are very valuable, and I also would like to know, are we in need of any drivers at this point?
Always. I mean, we are fully staffed, but we are always looking to train people and get them on sub-route, and then eventually then they can get into a regular route.
And I know that those individuals that are responsible for training, the bus drivers, have had quite a bit of experience themselves.
Yes, they have loads of experience.
By how many would you say you have that trained?
We have two trainers.
Two trainers, okay. I know one personally, and I know that she works really, really hard and is committed...
Yes, definitely.
Committed to our students and to the district, so I thank them for everything that they do on a daily basis.
I'd like to echo those comments and congratulate their Transportation Department on this contract. We certainly are very proud and happy, too, that we were able to come up with this contract. And Attorney Elwood, thank you for your longstanding relationship and work that you do on these contracts representing our board, and that's certainly appreciated as well. Thank you. Any other comments? Call, roll, please.
Trusty Wilkie?
Yes.
Trusty Rayan?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Vazquez?
Yes.
Trusty Malata?
Yes. Speaking of transportation, next up, we've got the approval to auction, for auction services for buses.
This was something that we have done before that Danielle had brought to us, and I think it's a great opportunity, again, to really look at, you know, how and in what way we can try to recuperate any of those dollars when we're using the opportunity to have a trade-in. So, the trade-in typically offers between $2,500 and $4,000 when you just simply trade it in. However, through Hawn Auctions, which we did do in 2024, we sold several buses, and they ranged in the auction from $5,750 to $9,750, which is obviously larger than the biggest amount to do the trade-in. They do charge a 10% fee, but that meant that we netted between $5,175 and $8,775 per bus. We have currently five standard school buses that qualify for auction, and the cost, again, is 10% of the total sale, and I'm requesting your approval to utilize this auction service once again.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to approve auction service for buses?
Make a motion to approve.
Second?
Your motion is second. Any discussion? Call, roll, please.
Trusty Rayan?
Yes.
Trusty Smith?
Yes.
Trusty Vazquez?
Yes.
Trusty Malata?
Yes.
Trusty Wilkie?
Yes. Okay, next, we'll move on to our superintendent report.
Registration help day, this is our second one of the year over the summer. We like to do this. It is not a requirement, but a lot of families do appreciate the opportunity. So, the registration help is August 5, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Lavenda Learning Lab at Portage High School. They can come there and get any type of help registering as needed. We also have a lot of different things onsite. I know last year as well as this year, Dawn's crew is gonna be providing samples to students and that, so that's a great opportunity. Also, just a reminder, we are currently enrolling online for the '25, '26 school year. We have the flexible learning opportunity with Pace Virtual Academy for the high school students, preschool opportunities in the district, as well as accepting kindergarten and first grade out-of-district students. So, those are all things that are ongoing and exciting to see how they're unfolding in the district. Today, just a great security benefit that we are adding. I was able to get an email from Milay today where just approving where the playground fencing is going to be, just again, another opportunity to increase security, and as we go to the buildings and we're working with our instructional aides who also oftentimes do provide the support at lunch and recess, I know that they will greatly appreciate this fencing because it's just another opportunity to feel that that area is secure. So, I want to thank Milay, that's been another project amongst all other projects going on. If you've noticed, there, the curricular fees in this last budget session, we can start charging some curricular fees. Again, they are not for adopted materials like a textbook or a digital textbook. There, there can be curricular fees that are for those consumable things, they can be for technology fees. However, due to the timing of that finalizing, we felt it was best to revisit any of those additional fees, fully knowing that the fees that are now provided through the state tuition support just truly aren't hitting the need that we have to be able to cover them. We still feel like leaving one year and then revisiting this at open registration next year so that we're not catching families off-guard this time of year with any fees. So, it gives us some time to study, also look about what other fees people are putting back in place and make sure we're fair about that, and of course, stay lower. We like to always say that our fees are lower because it's a, it's a good place to be. So, there won't be any fees this year again, and we will revisit it. Also, the Willow Creek Project for Willow Creek Middle School, however we move forward Also, the Willow Creek project for Willow Creek Middle School, however we move forward with that, we are still currently looking at October, November as our bid timeline, so we're continuing to meet and work through some of those things. It's an exciting time for that project, and I look forward to kind of seeing how that evolves in the next couple of months. Also, the fields, if you've not taken a drive a little bit back there by softball, baseball, it's really coming along. It's a great, exciting opportunity as well for those builds to be updated. To see all the drainage going in is wonderful. We know what happens in the spring with baseball and softball, and it's going to be great. Milay's team continues to do a great job custodial and maintenance. There's a lot of work to be done around here. You know, you go into those buildings, and they really are in good condition, considering the age of our facilities. What they do really matters, and seeing the pride that they take really, really makes a, a strong impact in what we're doing. Additionally, the HVAC project that Milay's overseeing at Jones, that's just another one that's almost completed, so it's, it's great. We have three elementaries remaining thereafter to get those HVAC projects done. Startup school is set for August 18th. We're excited to welcome back our school year employees. Many of them come back the 14th, a couple of groups come back the 15th, and our welcome back orientation, all staff meeting for your information, is August 15th at 8:30 AM. So they'll typically be coming, obviously, a little sooner. We've got some great opportunities that Cindy helped line up a vendor fair, so we've got all sorts of, we've got the public library coming, we've got the Humane Society coming with some animals, we've got all kinds of things going on. MetLife will be there, some of our different organizations of vendors that we work closely with, just to have that opportunity. So it should be an exciting morning. The teachers have been helping me prepare for what they would like to see, what they feel their colleagues would like to see, and I asked them in the state interviews, various employee groups, so we have that, and, I mean, these weeks are going fast, getting right back to the start of it, so it's exciting.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Dr. Alanis? If not, are there any items that weren't on the agenda the board, anyone on the board would like to bring up? If not, I don't believe we had any public comments. Doug, did you have anything?
No, I did not.
So we had our little bit of time off from meetings in the last couple of months, and it looks like we'll be back in full swing in August, with our next meeting will be August the 11th. We'll be back to those two meetings a month, and an exciting time, it was another school year and kind of bittersweet, right, the end of summer, but it's exciting to see the kids fill our buildings again, so. Anybody have anything else this evening? If not, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.